We have three main objectives for this evening's work session. First, we want to present the report of the SARC to you and make it available to the public. Secondly, we want to engage you in discussion surrounding the work of the SARC and the options in their report. And through discussion, determine any priorities you have as this redistricting process moves to the next stage, which is public hearing. Lastly, we want to outline the next steps in the redistricting process. I want to thank the members of the SARC for their time and service. The SARC was comprised of not only our staff, but also parent representatives and members of the county government staff. I also want to thank our co-chairs of the SARC, Mr. Prokop and Mr. Hardesty, for their efforts to guide the process and support the work of the committee. I also want to thank Commissioner Rothstein for joining us for the presentation and discussion this evening. In just a moment, I'm going to ask Mr. Prokop and Mr. Hardesty to guide us through the presentation of the SARC's report. They are assisted by other staff here this evening. At the very end of their presentation of the report, Mr. O'Neil and I will then move the board into a discussion of the options and the various priorities the board may wish to consider. As you know, board members, there are many complex factors that must be considered during redistricting. Often, one factor interacts with another, sometimes in a competing fashion. So there are many moving parts to this report that make the work a bit complex. I would suggest in this case that we refrain from questions and allow our co-chairs to complete their presentations so we can see how all the parts fit together, and then we can move into the discussion stage, answer questions, and frame the priorities. We've allotted sufficient time so that we will be able to have a full and complete discussion this evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Prokop?
So, yes, this evening, we're going to review the presentation. We're not going to review the entire report, obviously. It's quite long, but we're going to hopefully be able to move through this relatively quickly, some of which you're about to see, seen in our update that we provided you a few months ago. Just as a bit of background, you know, FERC, Freedom Elementary Redistricting Committee, was the origination of this concern in the southern area. COVID shut that down, was re-instituted last January. And as Superintendent McCabe mentioned, it's made up, SARC is made up of, as FERC was, with county staff, school system staff, and also parent representatives, some of which are here this evening, I think, sitting in a committee group altogether for protection. But the committee actually came together very nicely because the, you know, the committee members were really quite thoughtful and deliberate in the way they approached things. They had a great deal of information to sift through, just a humongous amount of information, information that we deal with all the time, terminology, all sorts of county intricacies and whatnot. So, you know, they really took a lot of time and spent, obviously, a lot of effort to understand it because when they came to the table, they were very engaged, they brought information, they brought questions. And the great thing was, the collaborative effort was such that even when things didn't go their way, if someone wanted something, it was accepted by the group and accepted by the person, we were able to move on. So it was a good committee to be a part of. It was a lot of work, a lot of time spent since January, I mean, it's five months, it was 11 meetings. I calculated somewhere around 33 hours of time in the committee itself. We had a subcommittee made up of CCPS staff, including Ms. Gramada and Mr. Wernick, and we probably spent another 30 hours in that. And then there was untold hours between Bill Anita and Keith here, Keith Shorter, to do the in-depth analysis that was necessary to bring the information back to the full committee so that they could really analyze, okay, we want to go this direction, what does that mean? So it's quite a bit of work, quite a few layers there to make that happen. So since January, as I said, we've met 11 times. Where we are in the timeline at this point is September, it's day before September, but we're presenting our, the recommendations at this point. We were just told that the public hearing for September is the 21st, September 21st, 7:00 PM at Century High School. And I understand that our, the, after that meeting, there'll be, public comment will be taken. The committee will reconvene, assess the comments, and then make a final recommendation to the superintendent and to be returned to the board in November at another public hearing with a vote on 11:30. So November 30th at 6:00 PM in this boardroom, with the intention that the results, the impact at schools and families will be notified in December. That's the timeline, those are the, you know, that's, and that's where we're right there at this point. We put up this map, I think, the last time, tried to give everybody a kind of a sense of the area we're talking about. It's helpful to see that the density of the schools in the southeastern portion of the map there, because it plays a critical part in the population densities, but also it played a big role in how we looked at the boundary lines and how we considered how we would move students. For instance, the committee was very much concerned about whether or not, or not to have a student move from one school, drive past that school, and then into another school, for instance. Or because of the way, you can see, some of the boundary lines are so close to the locations of other schools, you can see the line of, the line of schools, which ones, yeah, Freedom, I don't know if you can, yeah. And what happens is, one of the difficulties with some of the locations of the schools, you have people who are actually looking out their back windows at a school and being moved to another school. So these were, you know, these are real concerns. The parents brought those up, and they were considered as we discussed moving forward with the, with the, with any boundary changes.
That map is also on this easel, so if it's more convenient, as this discussion moves forward and you have, you know, you need to eye things up, it can be here, or I can bring it over to anyone who really wants to look at the bigger version of that map at any point, just let us know.
And that map also has all of the current students plotted, so all the little specs you see on there are actual students.
And lastly, to keep in mind, the southern region of the county, this Freedom area, is the designated growth area of the county. It's where growth is tailored to happen. The next two slides are the, essentially, the starting point for our discussions in the, with the, with the committee. We chose the year 2026, five years out. Our projections are still very accurate. They're actually pretty darn accurate, 10 years out, right, Bill? But 2026 is where we wanted to, is where we thought we would draw that line and make the determinations on our boundaries adjustments based on these utilization percentages. Keep in mind that the projections, there's a lot of, we had a presentation regarding enrollment projections and how developments are captured in those projections. There's some thoughts that we should be taking developments that are in the conceptual phase, haven't been submitted to the county for review, and see if those can be incorporated. There's quite a few developments that are in the, there's the, the Mount Airy area has a very large development, I think it's the Beck property, the Sykesville has Warfield. And there's, in the Sykesville area, there's also Obrecht, there's properties along Obrecht Road that could be quite large developments, but those are just conceptual, those are just, you know, nothing's been submitted, there's very little, there's one large development that's really one of the main concerns from the county's perspective, usually referred to as the Hobie Wolf property, it's about 103 homes. That one will kick off if there are decisions made to reduce the utilization of Freedom to below 120%. If that occurs, that would be the only project that's really teed off and ready to go. But even that would take some years because there's a limit to the number of permits that are allowed to be pulled per development. So that could only be 25 permits per year. So it's a four-year approximately, a four-year process, just to build that out. So from the time that a development is submitted for review to the county, it's a good two years before that can happen. So it, there's a perception, I think, that houses, that developments, once they get going, that the houses spring up like mushrooms in the spring, but it just doesn't, it just doesn't work that way. There is time for those students to come into those houses as those houses are built out, sold, and occupied, that we can capture them in the enrollment projections. And therefore, the slopes, the line slopes will change depending on what those, depending on those students. So just to keep that in mind, that there's nothing that's going to trigger a massive growth out there or massive development.
Just, I agree with you, and you said it very well. There are a couple of very large parcels that are being, that are beyond just being considered, that the Zabel property off of Ridge in Marysville is very large. We lessen the density of that because of the concerns, one being Carrolltown Elementary, and then other reasons, to maintain the conservation and the concerns about, you know, Ridge Road in Marysville as far as the capacity. The other one is the Beatty property, which is off of Bennett, that feeds into Freedom. And, you know, I've been working on the planning commission prior, and we have slowed down some development that feeds into Freedom because of these concerns. But you're right that these are conceptual, but they're at a point now where they're now being defined. And, you know, we, I think we got the right mix of density for these two properties, but they are two very large parcels. And, you know, the community that surrounds it is very concerned about those growths and how they are associated with both Carrolltown and Freedom. They're large, but they're definitely in consideration beyond just concept.
Commissioner Rothstein, what is the community saying regarding the growth that is proposed to happen down there? Because I think, I can say some of the things I've heard from the community down there, they're done with it, like, stop.
Absolutely.
But I mean, I mean, that's the thing, I think, we also need to, when we're looking at these, we need to take those things into consideration too, is, you know, from the community, is they don't want any more growth to occur because this could be a snowball effect later on down the road. I mean, I'll flat out say it, I am not going to propose any type of building of a new school.
There's, no.
It's closed three, so there's like, there's no reason to even talk about that part. But I think that's something that we need to make sure we're hearing too from the community is, how do they feel about any of the building going on down there that's proposed?
Overall frustrated, that they weren't listened to for a long time, as the Freedom Plan was being defined, like you said, as a designated growth area. It is one of the nine designated growth areas in the county, the others in municipalities, and this is an unincorporated, but it is the largest designated growth area. I, like most of us, inherited this Freedom Plan and working hard with the community not to just continue down the path of the Freedom Plan itself, that was accepted in 2018, but to define it, just like you said, that we do not accept the growth that just because it's the plan, that's what we do. And the community came out very clearly, and very important that they came out very clearly, and we had the ability to say, okay, you know, you're, I want to say, just, you're right, but you've identified the issues. So the two large parcels, the Zabel and Beatty property are very large parcels. Warfield is large, and it's going to continue to grow, especially north of Warfield. Elm Street developers are looking at a larger parcel for more townhomes, and they're, and they're being sold very quickly. But we've slowed down the density down there, and even though it's the designated growth area, we've lessened the density because of the concerns of, as parents would say, the overcrowdness in both Carrolltown and Freedom. That's, from day one, that's why I was pushing to do this, I'm really, you know, excited that we're at this point where we can really help define what we're doing forward and communicate it to the community.
And I think it's important because, like I said, there's so many pieces to that, you know, it's the road construction, it's the buses, it's how the kids getting on the buses, or they have to cross the road, do we have to have the bus turn back around and go get the kid off on the other side of the road? You know, there's a lot of different pieces to it and traffic flow. So I think all of that definitely needs to be, when we're talking about all this, all that needs to be looked at, you know, as the puzzle piece is put together.
Absolutely. And John's been, you've been a part of this, you know, coming into the planning zoning meetings and, you know, talking about this specifically in concert with, like you said, the road capacities, and then we talk about the fire EMS and other, you know, issues when we're talking about growth. But, yeah, as far as, as far as density, that's what brought us here today, or at least brought me here, you know, and that's not to be overgrowing areas just because we can in large parcels, but do it smartly where we're not growing too fast, where we will not have the infrastructure to keep up with the growth, you know, especially when it comes to the schools, so. Yep.
So this was the starting point for elementary, middle, and high. We, the committee, during discussions, the committee priorities kind of come out where everyone's the most concerned, where are the areas that are, that most concern them? There are the questions that would come up during every, every time we looked at a goal or an option, these are the questions that would come up. We do have a list in the appendix of all of the criteria and parameters we looked at. And as we mentioned before, some, these do compete against one another at times, depending on what your main desire is, what your main concerns are. And that's, and that is one of the struggles, it takes up quite a bit of time as we, as we suggest moves and to look at polygons, to look at, you know, which, which, which boundaries to move and whatnot, these do, these do compete against one another at times. So, but the conversation always has to distill down to what's our, what's the most important thing to us, and then the committee would land on, okay, these things, it meets enough of our, of our needs and our goals to move on. So that's just some of the, some of the things we looked at, some of the, some of the items we focused our time on. And ultimately, what we started to do, we used, what we decided to do was to utilize Board Policy FB adequate facilities, which defines a threshold for facility adequacy for student enrollment. It's the board, it's a board policy, and it was the, you know, you could, I suppose, you know, there are dozens or hundreds of ways you could try to determine what criteria to use, but since this was written as a board policy, it seemed like the best place to start. So for, so for goal one, all we were trying to do was to get the board, or get, I'm sorry, to, you know, to get the schools just to below inadequate according to Policy FB. Goal two was to meet adequacy at less than 100, less than or equal to 100%. Goal three was sort of a little hybrid, I suppose, or a goal two with flexibility. So there, what we were looking at, where, from analyzing the options in goal two, we saw there were schools with, you know, that were 102%, 103%, and was it worth moving those students just to meet that goal, give ourselves some flexibility, remove that, and obviously, that would reduce the number of students impacted. And then goal four was, you know, the committee was very committed from the beginning to looking at the whole southern area and to try to, if we're going to go through this difficult process, to try to leave some room to grow, understanding, as was mentioned, it's the area designated for growth. So those were all, you know, high priority, way, you know, well, there's a progression to this, if you, when, as we look at the goals and we look at the options that are coming up, there's a progression to how we're looking at this. And there was a logic that we used that was sustained through each, each option that we looked at. So there's nothing that looks radically different from goal to goal, from option to option, it built upon one another. So there's, if you notice that the appendix has maps in it that, I mean, Stuven Rausch so wonderfully put together for us, they're actually, you can use, they're useful for multiple goals, for instance. So it is, you know, you can, you can build upon it. So, so there is a logic to it, and I think that helped keep, keep the whole process moving, the whole committee process moving along. So goal one, as a, you know, as an overview, it's the least number of students, obviously, and as we progress, those numbers will grow. There is no domino effect, the idea where you're moving students from one school into another and then have to take those students in that school and move them to achieve the utilization rates that are established, that we're trying to meet. It does improve the elementary, middle feeder patterns. It does address the adequate public facilities ordinance. Now, all, everything we present does, so while it's up there, everything does address the county's adequate public facilities ordinance. But obviously, limited room for future growth. We only are going down to 105 in elementary, 110 in middle, least impact to transportation routes, which makes sense because it's the least number of students moved. Drop it down to 100% for goal two. We broke that up into three options. Yeah, we broke that up into three options for a clean feeder pattern without cleaning, cleaning up the feeder patterns, and also a capital component. So more students, more students moved, more, more impact to transportation, as you can imagine, and then there's the capital aspect, which we can get into a little bit later when we take a look at the primary options that were recommended. And then goal three took goal two essentially, but as I said before, it sort of allowed some flexibility, not be as parochial, look at it as parochial, and so there were fewer students moved when we get to goal three, which is a little out of the norm for the progression, but, but there were, but it did show us some interesting stuff. Lastly, goal four, like I said, was to, was to go to the 95% utilization, try to end this, you know, this, this with having room to grow. Now, when we, when we looked at option one, which didn't have a capital component, it was pretty clear that we were going far north, much further north than the committee felt comfortable with given our charge. So we only reviewed that to a certain degree. We didn't go too far down the road, only enough to be able to get some estimates of the type of, what kind of numbers we might be looking at. But it was enough where we were concerned, as I say, we just went, that the, our, you know, our charge was southern area and with, without a capital component, we're going far, far north. So we moved to a second option, which is a cap, which is the capital component, which does allow us to constrain those moves to the, to more of the southern region. We still have to hit some of the Westminster schools, as some of the other options also did, but not nearly to the, to the extent that option one did. So with that, Mike was going to go over our primary options.
Good afternoon, everyone. As Ray just outlined, there were a total of seven options in total that the committee looked at. We, as a committee, voted to try and determine our top three. So what we're presenting tonight in this slideshow is our top three. They're not ranked, they're presented equally, but they are what the committee decided to be the final three of the seven that we looked at to present to you. So option one, primary option one would be 100% utilization with clean feeders. Primary option two would be 100% with clean feeders and capital additions. And then primary option three would be at the 95% utilization, capacity utilization level with clean feeders, and also includes capital additions. I think it's important for the board to understand the challenge, one of the challenges we have as a committee is the location of Freedom. Freedom is the most overcrowded of the elementary schools that we're looking at, and it's in the far northeastern corner of the, I've got the wrong pointer here, of the county. It's Freedom. So we have to move kids from Freedom, and we either have to go north or west, there's no room south, and there's certainly no place to go other than the reservoir east, so we're kind of limited there in terms of options. And when we move kids west, we are in many cases bumping kids, what's known as dominoing, so we're moving kids into an adjacent school, which then may push kids in, not the same kids, but another group of students into another adjacent school, and so on and so forth. So that was one of the major challenges of the committee, just the geographic location and the numbers of students in each of the schools in the southern area. So primary option one is, again, 100% utilization with clean feeders. It definitely improves the elementary to middle to high school feeder pattern. Primarily, there was a section of Winfield Elementary School that was going to Sykesville, and another section that was going to Mount Airy Middle, that's been corrected. The split of Eldersburg Elementary, no matter really what option we would look at, does not correct that. That's just a numbers situation in terms of the number of elementary schools in the southern area that feed into the number of middle schools that we have in the, in the southern area. So it's never going to be a situation where we can have 100% of every elementary school feeding into a middle school there. This option involved 10 elementary schools, so it would be every elementary school, and we counted Mount Airy and Pars as two separate elementary schools, four middle schools, the three in the southern area plus West Middle, and the four, and four high schools, the three high schools in the southern area plus Westminster High. Approximately 1,095 students impacted. Now, it's important to understand that this is just an estimated number, and in order for the committee to do its work, we have to use what are current students that are geocoded on a map. We won't, we can't predict who the students would be or where they would live in 2026. So we're moving 1,095 students in the exercise that we did. In 2026, it'll be somewhat different, I would imagine, but historically, going through this process in the past, it's going to be pretty close. Communities do change, but they don't change radically in terms of the number of students that they produce. So just wanted to be clear that if we adopted this plan, chances are, it would not be exactly 1,095 students in 2026. I explained the domino effect, so this would involve multiple schools. It impacts schools outside the southern region because we're moving kids from, from the south up to Mechanicsville and also to Robert Moton, which then puts them in the Westminster area feeder program, feeder plan, which would, would include West Middle and Westminster High School. This plan would not involve any capital additions. School time changes for about 60% of students, so this is another aspect of moving students from one school to another school. Because of our bus tiering, we have approximately, well, we have almost every bus on three different transportation tiers. And in this region, we have an elementary, Eldersburg Elementary, that's on our first tier, they open at 7:45. We have other schools that, Linton Springs is a second tier, opens at 8:35, I believe. And then we have others, Freedom is 9 o'clock, and the other elementaries in the southern area, and including Mechanicsville, that open at 9:30. So students that would be moving from Freedom to Eldersburg, for instance, they'd be going from a 9 o'clock start to a 7:45 start. In some cases, in this plan that we're presenting right here, option one, we have students moving from Freedom up to Mechanicsville. moving from Freedom up to Mechanicsville. So that would be the biggest time change, going from 7:45 start to a 9:30 start. So that, this is just an outcome of moving students in this area that really was not getting around that because Eldersburg has the most room of the elementary schools in that area and with the earliest starting time of all the elementaries, obviously those students that would move into Eldersburg are going to be impacted, or out of Eldersburg. And there would be significant bus routing change, routing changes with all of these options. Anytime we're changing school boundaries, we're going to have to change school bus routes. Our initial look at this is we're hoping that we can, in the case of changing boundaries from one school to another, we can move buses from one location to another, we can extend bus routes. So without doing further analysis, we don't believe we would need any additional buses, but there would be extensive changes to bus routes. So with the driver shortage, it would be difficult to support at this point in time, you know, recommendations that would include additional buses. So this is, uh, this is the middle school map and I think in your, the, the major report, we have the elementaries first, but in your handout and for this presentation, we have the middle schools first. And there's each one of these areas, first off, the shaded areas, just so everyone understands, are the students that are moving. So if you look at the top left, there's CC, that section, they are, they are students that are currently in the Mount Aerie Elementary area that would be, that would be moving to, to, Mount Aerie Middle to West Middle. And that's the way this works. There, there are very detailed maps of each one of these as, as they're labeled in the full report. So anyone that wants to look at that can see more detail regarding those, those areas. But unless there's some questions about any of the specific areas, I'll move on to the elementary. But, but that's how that works. The shaded areas are the students that would be moving.
So I do have a quick question. Cause I, I think I said right from the start, one of my biggest concerns was the areas that were affected before, I don't, I didn't want to see them affected again. Would this, so this shaded, would those, would have been students for New Windsor Middle?
Uh, they very likely could have been, yes.
Okay.
Cause we extended the, the Mount Aerie boundary quite, quite far when New Windsor Middle closed, yes. They would have been, quite honestly, yes, they would have been.
Okay.
I know we were supposed to hold most of our questions to the end, right? Should, should we wait until we go through all three options?
If you can, if you have something burning, you can go ahead.
So this is, this is the elementary map and you can see that the changes that are recommended there. Again, we have, we have students that are, this section B here, these are students that are moving from Freedom to Mechanicsville. Section D, I believe, is the same. They're, actually D is Eldersburg to Mechanicsville. S, or, yeah, we'll be moving from Linton Springs to Mechanicsville. This particular option, by moving students into Mechanicsville, we've now overcrowded Mechanicsville to the point that we have to move students in this, this area here into Robert Moton. These two areas, I'm sorry, maybe I'm better over here, in these two areas. This section F are students that are in Winfield currently that are going to be moving to Robert Moton. And this is Robert Moton's boundary here. So, you know, as, as a summary, this moves 1,095 students, but does not involve any capital improvements. And gets us to 100% utilization for all schools. So, primary option two is 100% utilization with capital improvements. And again, just as in option one, this improves the elementary middle to high feeder pattern, takes care of the split in the Winfield boundary between Mount Aerie and, and, I'm, I'm sorry, between, yeah, Mount Aerie Middle and, and Sykesville Middle. There are 697 students and 15 schools impacted with this. So there are fewer elementary schools, but again, it still involves West Middle School and Westminster High School in the Westminster area feeder. Has a minor domino effect. And the capital improvements, there are five elementaries that would be involved, Carrolltown, Eldersburg, Freedom, Linton and Piney Ridge and Sykesville Middle School. With, right now, we're a, an estimated cost of 6.85 million. And we estimate, based upon the current number of students moving, that there would be about 30% of students that would have a school time change. Again, we have, we have the maps to show the students that are moving. You can see there are fewer areas with this option due to the increased capacity at, at the middle school level. There are fewer students moving, fewer areas involved because of the increased capacity with, with Sykesville Middle School planned. And again, the, some of the, the same moves that you saw in option one are repeated here. AA, BB, CC are the same as option one for middle school. For elementary, again, it's fewer students, fewer areas. And as, as we saw in option one, the area marked A, area marked I, area marked F are the same moves as were made in option one. And as Ray mentioned earlier, with the process that we use trying to be consistent and, and just logic, common sense, looking at where students reside and the options that we have in terms of where to move them that made the most sense from a distance and ride time standpoint, you will see many of the areas repeated from option to option. Moving on to option three, which gets us to 95% utilization with capital additions included. Obviously, it increases the overall capacity of southern area schools by having the additions to certain schools. 925 students in 16 schools would be impacted. So essentially, it would be all of the southern area elementary schools. Again, Westminster, West Middle and Westminster High School would be included. Again, improves the overall feeder pattern. The capital additions would be at the elementary level with Carrolltown, Freedom and Piney Ridge. And in this option, we would be improving capacity at two middle schools. In addition to Sykesville, we would be adding improvements or capacity to Mount Aerie Middle. A much smaller domino effect, however, with more students moving from Linton to Mount Aerie Elementary and from Sykesville Middle to Mount Aerie Middle, there would be longer bus rides for some students. Not terrible, but longer than what they currently are for some students. And about a third of the students would have an impact in their school time, start time. So here are the middle school moves. Again, AA, CC, HH, QQ and a portion of SS are all the same as you saw in option one for middle schools. For the elementary moves, the areas marked A, B, D, F, N, a portion of V and J2 are the same as the areas marked as moving in option one. So with that, I think we're going to move to some general points of discussion for the board.
When Mrs. McCabe started this work session, she said that after they kind of presented the, the background of the plan and the options, she and I would return to some items for you to possibly hone your discussion and on. I know you may have questions too and we can recapture all of those, but it, it may also help frame your questions around these points. So some of the items we wanted the board to, to think about, and if, and if you're so inclined to weigh in and offer us any of your insights on would be these items. What about the level of redistricting needed to resolve your view of the overcrowding or the utilization of the schools in the region over their capacities? And if you remember back, was it April or May, when the, the co-chairs, we gave a status report at one of the Board of Ed meetings, they kind of tried to lay out where the work had been and where they thought it might go. And, and at that point, just to see if the board had any specific directions you wanted to send them on, the, the takeaway we had was that the board was comfortable with the work, felt like the committee was fully invested and left it up to the committee to make, make its own parameters to bring this report to conclusion. And so they have, but now is the night where you also get to weigh in if those were the correct choices in your estimation as to what parameters they chose or factors they chose. So they based the decisions on utilization, as Ray said earlier, on board policy, but then when you get to that third, that third option of 95%, that was a, that was the committee's decision to say if we wanted to go lower than 100, what, what's the sweet number to, percentage to look for, they opted for 95. So, you know, for now rhetorically, but does the board have any comment on, on that sort of decision or, or where that analysis ended up? The use and extent of capital improvement add-ons as part of it, we, we brought that up at the check-in and you said, "We're okay with you exploring anything. We're, we're not going to vote on anything tonight, but we're okay with the committee having the freedom to explore." They, they have done that, obviously. I think, and they probably said this, but just to, to reiterate, I think why the committee would ultimately land on a couple of the options being presented as the primary options, two include capital additions and one does not, is because that keeps the program ultimately or the changes ultimately more in the southern region, which is how we defined this process at the beginning when we started and, and then time passed and factors postponed. And then when you look at the numbers now at the five-year window, suddenly you're into Westminster. And, and we, we titled this, "The Southern Area Redistricting." So what, you know, what will be the community's feeling about that? If the capital additions are in play, then, you know, it mitigates the impact on the number of students who would be leaving what most people might think of as the southern, southern area or the southern, southern region. But at the same time, if you, the Board of Ed feel like, well, we wouldn't be interested in capital additions right now, or at least not as part of this process, knowing that makes it much easier to determine which option would be the one that goes out for a public hearing on September 21st. That kind of feedback would be helpful. Feeder patterns, and, and this probably gets into the comments that Superintendent McCabe made, that sometimes these factors, all of which are important, can compete. So what is the importance of feeder patterns? I think most people, me included, at face value, would say, "I would, I would love to have clean feeder patterns, that's very important to me." But if you also feel equally strongly that shorter bus ride times are important to you, those two things do not go together. So, you know, you can mitigate ride times and, and some other things if you're less wedded to clean, the cleanest feeder patterns possible, maybe moving fewer kids as a result of that, that whole, that whole change. There's, it's, Mike said, it's unavoidable that there are going to be impacts to student school start and end times. There, there's no way to change that without adding buses. That's also the other way, you would have to add buses because the buses are tiered. I don't know what there is to do about that because under any, any option, there'd be a little bit of that, but be mindful that as much as sometimes redistricting causes emotion, so too does when you try to change someone's school time or send them to a school that has a different time. So that's an aspect here. We've talked about the Westminster area and how that, how that became a part of the, part of the discussion. The other options by the committee, you're not limited and, and for that matter, neither is Superintendent McCabe. When she brings you back a recommendation as this process moves forward sometime in November, she, she's the superintendent. She doesn't have to say, "I, you know, I select this exact option the way it was presented." She, she has the flexibility as our leader to, to say, "Here's what I'm thinking and, and I'd like some tweaks to that," or "I'd like something different." You, as the Board of Ed, are not committed to approving this plan or any aspect of this plan or any tweaks made to this plan following a public hearing process. So all of the options they've studied are worthy of your discussion tonight or, or any questions you have. And then lastly, and perhaps most importantly for us in terms of our thinking about the process, is do you have through your discussion this evening or through your consensus in your discussion, will there, will, will you have any direction for us on what final option or of, we're presenting it as, which of the three primary options being presented here would be the one that shows up in the public hearing on September 21st in the evening at Century High School? Because we think it would be, it would be cumbersome, it would be very challenging to the community, even to people who work here, to just say, "We're here for the hearing, here's this report, it's filled with lots of information, what do y'all think?" It's probably going to need to be, here's, you know, here's the primary option. There, the way I would envision this, the hearing is, there'd be a brief staff presentation that describes that option and explains it a little bit. And then citizens would have the opportunity to offer three minutes of public input on that option as presented. So they've narrowed it to three, we're seeking through discussion with you tonight if, if that could be narrowed to one to go out to hearing. And if not, then I think it's up, it's up to the superintendent to, to make, you know, to make that decision for the hearing. So I know you have a lot of questions, but we wanted to go ahead and finish, we'll stop there. They'll take any questions and we'll also be very interested in any thoughts you have on these items we highlighted. So thank you very much for your, your attention as we got through that.
Questions? First, I want to thank you guys, part of the redistricting committee and everyone else that was involved. I know it's definitely not an easy task. Been there and I got the t-shirt and hat, so I know it's, it's very difficult. I know that all too well, so I appreciate everything you guys put into it. Were there any discussions about potentially looking at making like, maybe Freedom Elementary a K through two and Eldersburg a three through five? Or maybe part of eighth grade go to, from Mount Aerie, go to South Carroll? Or anything like that, just to kind of alleviate that just a little bit?
Well, those concepts were kind of discussed amongst the committee and we kind of relied on our instructional leaders in terms of guidance in that area.
Okay.
So I don't know if anyone wants to join us for that conversation, but we did look at, you know, there were some things that might work numbers-wise, but it had a serious instructional impact. So we kind of tabled those.
Okay, which I imagine would have to be another PE teacher, another art teacher of music, et cetera, media center specialist. So operationally, it would not make...
There's a lot of transportation issues with that as well.
Okay, just asking. And, yeah, I am, I'm like going to go through every single scenario, like did you, did you, did you? And I think I had a question earlier, you know, I think one of my biggest concerns is I did not want to see an area that had been affected by the closures before affected again. I think at this point, a lot, a lot of them have, either they're getting ready to graduate or they have graduated. Middle school-wise, elementary-wise, not so much yet. But I think that was the one thing, cause I think that the community is still going to be extremely sensitive. The communities that were impacted by it, they're still going to be extremely sensitive to anything. And I, I can tell you, that's where my concern's going to be. I definitely want to not impact as many students. Capital additions, how much are we talking? Like, do we have a...
There's estimates in the, there's estimates in the board.
In the bigger one?
Under each primary option has an estimate.
Yeah.
Ray, she, Board Member Potagley may be asking to define a little bit further what these additions would be.
Right.
A classroom at which school's, an addition of what size at Sykesville?
Which, which primary option?
I guess any of them, I mean...
I thought it was 6.8 million estimate, right?
I thought it was 6.8 million estimate, right? Like, what does that entail?
Right, yeah.
Is that an addition of like four classrooms at each of six elementary schools or something like that?
Right.
It's one additional classroom.
Ray, I'm sorry, cite your page from the full report.
Oh, sorry, page 40.
From the big report.
On the big, right, the big report, sorry.
Under capital considerations.
So, I think that's something the public needs to hear too, is how much are we talking in capital improvement? I mean, unfortunately, we are hearing enough from, and it's not unfortunate, it is a concern. We're hearing from the community of, "We need playgrounds, we need new basketball courts, we need things taken care of at our schools that the PTAs and PTOs are responsible for, but now you're telling us that we have to build an addition as we're redistricting." And I think the community's going to have concerns regarding those things. And I think that's just something I'm keeping in my mind.
I think the community has to understand, "We're here for education." For 40 years, I've built more tot lots than some of these people rode past. We're here for education. And to me, I said when we first did this, "We probably need to do some capital money to make this happen." And to me, and I know we've talked this before, my question would be with this, what's it doing to academics? Are we hurting now, are we making it better? What's it doing to operating expenses, more important than the capital? And the additional stuff at schools, half of which is for user groups, not for our school classes, I just, I don't understand how that even relates to building an addition to help our academics and our kids. And I understand what you're saying. We hear outcry about it, but we hear outcry about a lot of other things that, A, they need to understand what the rules are before they criticize what the rules are, but that's a whole nother subject for another time. But I'm curious, none of this added buses, correct?
Yes, that's our initial analysis.
That's the plan now.
No buses, maybe some longer bus rides.
Okay, so, other than the capital expenditures, do we see more in the operating budget because of this or less? And do we see, are there academic issues? Like, for instance, I keep hearing Freedom's our most overcrowded school, and I keep hearing it's one of the best performing schools. So, do we want to risk the performance of a school just to do a numbers game?
Right, we don't have any parents outcry that they want to be moved out of Freedom because it's overcrowded, because it is the best performing school, and they like having their kids there. They moved into the area because they thought that they were going to be going to Freedom Elementary School to now potentially be redistributed out.
And I don't know what we can do with an addition there, but if Freedom, and I know this is projected, but let's say they have 666 students there right now, they're in portables, they're eating lunch, they're using the library, they're using the gym. So, an addition to the school, to me, makes sense to soften how many people have to move from there. But, again, I'm not speaking for the group, obviously, but...
And to not leave that question unanswered in case people are watching, that on page 40, when I cut Ray off, it cites for this particular option where the additions would be and what's involved there, and it's basically one classroom per elementary, per the five elementary schools, and then, is it four classrooms for the middle school? An addition of four classrooms for Sykesville Middle. We're basing it on the current formula from, the cost assessment's based on the current formula from the inter-agency commission on school construction. But there was also some thought that, one of the thoughts I had when they brought it to us, and I think we mentioned this back at the update meeting, is maybe there could be some sort of killing two birds with one stone, because would this not also address the pre-K?
I was just about to ask that, about the pre-K.
Not the cost, not the cost. Because the difficulty is with the lack of information we have concerning the pre-K is we're not exactly sure how this is going to shake out. I mean, the plan we might end up with is we could do, we might not, you know, in general, we're probably, you know, we have to, you know, there might be a classroom per school.
Yeah, I'm sorry, not the cost, I didn't mean it, but if we're moving forward with pre-K in the plan, possibly in real life, you would coordinate these two things together. There'd be a little economy gained in that way.
Yeah, I was just...
Really where I wanted to go with some of this discussion, right?
We're on the same page, we just don't speak the same language.
Yeah, I was starting to think that.
You have the blueprint coming up, right, and all these impacts potentially to pre-K. What I wouldn't want to raise into a decision to address this one particular problem with blueprint looming and basically saying, "Okay, well, now what we're going to be doing with pre-K kind of blew up what we just tried to do with the southern area redistricting." I feel like these need to be rolled together and make sure that we have a holistic solution that works with all the pre-K mandates included in that, right? And there's a lot of direction that hasn't been provided yet at the state level in terms of both pre-K requirements, space considerations. So, there could potentially be money coming from the state for construction purposes, right? Maybe from a pre-K perspective?
So, the, and I see Marcia has her hand up, we won't forget you.
Okay, I just want to chime in here for a minute.
Do you want to do it now?
Nope, absolutely not. You say what you got to say, and then I'm going to jump in.
So, the answer is maybe. Certainly, the construction side of the state was not synced up with the policy side of the state.
Right.
But I do think that that drum's been beat enough that there's a realization now that we do need to look at that, and they have formed a work group, I believe, or are forming a work group to...
I'm not sure.
...analyze the impact of the blueprint on school construction, or there will be a work group. But when that money would show up in a state CIP, might be more than one session out, depending. And then as far as the uncertainty, there is still a lot of uncertainty. What's clear is what the law says relative to early childhood, and tonight, for people here, Steve Wernick might be the most knowledgeable person if he has more to add. We know what the law says would happen with pre-K, but the reality of, and basically it's a private-public partnership ultimately on a 50-50 split of to have the slots that are supposed to be there for eligible students, and I don't think this is unique to Carroll at all. We're nowhere near that in terms of having the capacity of, or even having the private partners, let alone to have the capacity. So, the big, you know, one of the big fears I've continued to try to harp on, much probably to the chagrin of people at statewide meetings, is if the reality in Carroll or elsewhere is that that private aspect never materializes, what are you going to do then? Are you going to say, "Do your best Carroll County Public Schools and Board of Ed," or are you going to say, "Well, then, if the private aspect's not there, then the Board of Ed has to make all those slots happen?" Because those are two very different capital, capital needs and capital costs. Is that accurate? Is it?
Yes, that's actually accurate. Currently, as we're looking at enrollment for our pre-Ks, we are getting really tight at this point for all our students who apply that are within that mandate of providing space. So, what we're actually doing is we're, you know, having children who can be transported, we're allowing those parents to, you know, send them to other schools that have pre-K openings, but it's not in their exact district. We're also working with some of the pre-K public providers, I'm sorry, private providers. We have only three, as I've shared all along, and that doesn't even, you know, the mandate right now is we're supposed to have roughly 30% of our pre-K students in those private providers. We don't even mirror 10% at this point. We just don't have the private providers because they haven't been able to seek the Maryland Exels or their accreditation. So, it's been very hard. We are working with the ones that we currently have, but we don't see an influx at this point of private providers going seeking that accreditation.
And it theoretically goes 30, 35, 40, 45, 50, correct?
Correct, so we go from 30 to 50 within those five years. MSDE, Maryland State Department of Education is supposed to have a waiver to allow, you know, counties such as ours who do not have those private providers to sign a waiver that we're doing our best with what we have, but the mandates still state that we have to find space for any students that are within those, within the criteria.
Marcia?
Yeah, first of all, this is probably one of the most detailed reports that I have received in the six years that I've been on the board, and I want to thank you all for your work. But if I was a parent and I moved to the Freedom Elementary, and I saw Freedom Elementary out my back window where my child could walk to, and then I'm going to get on a bus, I would not be a happy camper, and I do not blame a parent either for not being happy, because now then my child will probably have to ride a bus, and they moved to that area because it is such a successful school. And then, on the other hand, and Mr. Hurdisty, when you said about changing school times, I can tell you what's happened over at Hampstead and Spring Garden. When Spring Garden went early, guess what? There is a line of parents every morning driving their students, their children, back to Hampstead Elementary because that was a lack of enrollment in that school. So, I don't care whether you redistrict, change school buses, change times, parents are going to want their kids to go where they live. And I think we really need to consider that, and I'm an old-timer, but let me tell you, they have not done a lot of redistricting here in the county because people choose to live where they want their children to go to school. And the other thing is, we really have to look ahead with this future. You know, I just don't want to jump the gun on this and say, "All right, we're going to move 1,000 students," which I am definitely not in favor of, and then you're going to have then the blueprint coming. I think it's way too much on our plates right now. We've got a lot going on. I want to get back to normalcy, and yes, we need to do this, but it's, we need to sit back and look at this blueprint along with this before we make any really major decisions. Or we are making a very big mistake down the road. So, I guess you all know where I am.
And I understand that, and that's a factor in it all the time. I think sooner or later, we have to do this. We have no choice, and we want to do with the best information. My question about the process, this timeline has a lot of this happening quickly. Option 2 and Option 3 have 7 million and 10 million of capital construction. Is any of the construction in the critical path, and is there any way that everybody can be moved in the next two years and all of these additions be built? Can it possibly happen that quickly? And I assume we have no hopes of getting money from anybody for it.
Well, we don't. I guess the best answer to that question is probably not, not for this.
So, we should assume we're not. If we, if you guys get creative and get us money, that's a plus. But what about the timeframe? How can this construction happen in time to redistrict these kids? And if not all of them, some of them have to be in the critical path, maybe you could use portables, I don't know what the options are with the, I tend to favor the ones with the capital additions in my head right now. I have concerns that these guys have voiced also, but what's the timeline for that with the capital additions?
Well, I mean, we did discuss that, we feel that a good number of the moves can occur before the additions have to take place, because we know that the construction and the planning and construction is going to lag behind the other. But there is going to be a certain, you know, there's an expectation that those capital projects will follow within a reasonable period of time. So, they would have to be added to the facilities master plan and the capital plan as a high priority to follow the decisions made.
But, and I know it's tough, like Marcia said, this is a very detailed, and you guys did a great job, but let's say Option 3 has 925 kids. Can half of them be moved before the construction happens, or a third, or two-thirds?
Well, remember the 900, we're moving 925 kids, but the overcrowding we're addressing is in year 2026.
Yeah, I understand.
So, the current enrollments aren't that high.
Mm-hmm.
So, like at Freedom, they had about 600 kids last year. They're projected to be at 666. So, the move could occur, and we're not moving all of, you know, there's room in the schools, so like the additions would then come and follow potentially after the moves, if the moves were to occur in the timeline presented. Now, the moves could be made to be timed with the additions, but that would delay those redistricting.
Yeah.
And the projections would continue to be done, and the utilizations would continue to be impacted by those students staying.
Without me knowing the details, yeah, you know, maybe Carroll Town's addition doesn't have to happen until 2025, but maybe one of the others has to happen before we do anything.
They could be timed, and in this, on Primary Option 2, the intent was to coordinate them with the pre-K additions that were identified in the facility master plan, not knowing when those pre-K additions would occur. We, you know, they may be staggered, much like we did with the kindergarten additions, you know, a decade ago. We didn't, we didn't build all the kindergarten additions in one year, so...
Yeah, and if blueprint doesn't kick any money in for that, that's more capital expenditures on us.
Yeah, we're going to be asking you for blood across the street. Just saying, you know.
And asking, talking about across the street, I know we have talked about that county adequate public facilities ordinance. When you go across the street, you can change that number.
Possibly, I don't know the details.
I don't know.
But... I'm keeping my mouth sealed right now.
But, Mr. Ralstein, I do think there may be a decision.
We can have those...
Do you want to modify that zoning rule?
Sure.
Or do you want to kick in some money for capital construction? There's going to be some compromise.
We were going to have those conversations, you know, I can definitely say that.
Okay.
But, you know, two comments I just want to make, because I agree with you, Marcia, and also Kenny, is, one is, we need to look at this holistically. That's why when we did the Disney Growth Area, and I went on my little, you know, pulpit talking about it, you know, a little bit ago, was that the community was very concerned that we were not looking at the Freedom District, at Disney Growth Area, holistically. We're looking at it, hey, it's a Disney Growth Area, put everything in there and make it just grow. And we determined that it doesn't work that way, because it was going to have impact on the roads, on the schools, on the fire EMS, on safety and security. So, we took a step back, and then we moved forward with those two large parcels that do impact directly into Freedom and into Carroll Town with the Beatty property and with the Zabel properties off of Regent, off of Bennett. I don't understand, well, I won't say I don't understand why, but it makes sense, Kenny, where you were going was, why not apply the capital projects, you know, that we believe is going to be necessary before we start moving folks around? You know, build it, you know, prior. Just to me, makes more sense, even if it's not going to be, you know, you're saying we're not at overcapacity to a point of, you know, no return right now, and we're going to get there in 2026, but if we're going to get there in 2026, it's only a few years away. You know, we're in 2023 now fiscal year, so why not build now and apply the dollars and then have it at 80, 90% to get to a 95%? I mean, I think the community deserves that because it's been very frustrating for them and me. I mean, and whoever said, you, well, I think you said, "I moved here because of the schools." You know, they're awesome. And we do drive by liberty to get to Century where I live, because we, the feeder is piney, but that's a decision we made. But I just believe that if we look at the capital projects prior to the moves in sequencing...
Right, the, so we would have to go out in the next fiscal, next capital plan with these as the highest priority. Site plans, review process is taking us upwards of two years, and we're looking at at least a year of construction. So, if we started immediately in the, with the capital, with the upcoming capital cycle, yeah, with fiscal year '24, you know, we're three years out.
Right.
Right beyond that. So, that's the fastest we could, we could get in the ground and, or get the money, get in the ground and get out of the ground. So, that, so that, well, so that, everything else would have to wait for that to happen. So, it's not something we can, we can't do these sorts of projects immediately, and depending on the number, it's just a matter of being able to have the staffing to be able to manage this many projects, this many additions and occupied schools during the... have the staffing to be able to manage this many projects, this many additions and, and occupied schools during, during the school year. So it's, uh, there's quite a, quite a bit that has to go into that.
But the, but that, I mean, to me, that sounds like the right solution. I mean, you're, you're, you're kind of, you know, creating to me the right solution that has the least impact to our kids.
And I think it would, I, I think it would make some uh, people on the committee uh, uh, quite a bit more comfortable i- if those capital solutions were uh, agreed to uh, out of the gate. Because the concern is of course, that there is no a, a ability to commit uh, future funding uh, with decisions of a, a current board. So uh, that certainly would make some committee members more, more comfortable. We were looking at it from a slightly different perspective, which is how does the process normally work? And that's the, that's the logic we applied to making the, the recommendations we did. But there's nothing in here, I don't believe, that we said anything that would prevent that from happening. I don't believe, you know, if the money became available, Bill loves the plan and I love to build, so we're ready.
To me, it's, it's like you're, you're making the right rationale to go with that course of action, so.
The timing of, the timing of the redistricting, if, if a redistricting is approved is totally in the hands of the board. So, so yeah, I mean, the committee and, and the staff, I, you know, I, we didn't, we don't have a, rea- really the timing was just because that's, that's the soonest that the redistrict could, could happen, which would alleviate the um, utilization rates and, you know, with our board policy and the adequate facilities ordinance.
And, and I have a couple of concerns and some of it, you know, like you said, it makes common sense to do that. Um, and, and Tarr's comments about kids being moved twice from the school closures, that's getting far enough back. Like you say, some are graduating, but we don't want to make the mistake those people made. Uh, that, I think we've almost gotta shoot for 95% and we've gotta do the capital things. We don't want in 2026 to move 500 more kids. We don't want that to happen. We gotta look ahead.
And we've gotta coordinate it with the blueprint.
The blueprint complicates it.
It has to be done holistically, otherwise the moves that we make might end up not being the right moves.
Yes.
And when do we have the vote on this? What, what, what date do we have now?
It would be that second hearing date that we set.
And what's the date on that?
Uh, November 30th.
Yeah, because then we will have a new board in.
But, but in theory, tonight, we need to.
Well, I know, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying is, okay, that's why I was asking the date.
And in theory, tonight, we need, tonight, you would like us to pick a preferred option.
We, we would like that and I bet Mrs. McCabe would really like that.
Can I ask a bunch of additional detailed questions before we?
No, because we're not ready.
So I, I just wanted to, again, like before I ask any of these questions, I just want to thank the folks in, in the back of the room who are on the committee. Um, not an easy or a fun job and I appreciate your perseverance and your commitment to this process. Um, I was trying to read body language a little earlier. It was a little interesting, so I would love to talk with you or personally and hear some of your opinions on how this process went.
They made some tough decisions.
And how comfortable you are with these options, right? Because you're the ones that have been involved in the nitty gritty for the last several months. Um, so we'd love to hear some of, some of those um, um, opinions from, from you guys. I, I have a couple of questions that I think would be things that we would hear from the community based on some of the information that's presented here. Like, so even if you just go back as soon as page, uh, these aren't numbered. Um, but it's, it's the one that has the, the elementary page with the enrollment projections. And you just look really simply at, okay, Freedom is projected in 2026 to be 141 students over, right? Um, but Eldersburg has 109 that they could take on and Mechanicsville has 91 that they could take on. So that, and those are two adjacent school districts, two adjacent elementary schools, right? So, and, and I think maybe the question that I'm about, I'm gonna stand up and point, sorry.
Um, but I think this, this grid might kind of get at like, because my question would be, why wouldn't you just move the, the 100 kids to um, Eldersburg and the 90 kids to?
Mechanicsville?
Mechanicsville, thank you. Um, and only impact, you know, 200 kids in total. Um, and you don't have any capital projects, you don't, you know, you're moving very few kids. But I think it's these dots that kind of help you understand, like, there's not really a way to get, that there, there aren't a lot of kids in this area that it makes sense that you could actually move into Mechanicsville. Same, same is true of, Eldersburg I think maybe would work, but Mechanicsville, not so much.
You'd have to come, come all the way down to where Freedom Elementary is located to grab kids basically adjacent to Freedom Elementary.
And that was your point of kids where they're looking at the school in their backyard and suddenly you're now bussing them up to Mechanicsville, right?
And you could be potentially also taking a guess of, well, let's just hope it's majority of second graders, because we're just gonna hope it's the second graders that will fit into the Eldersburg. Because it, there's no guarantee of the grading. Because then you can end up having more in one grade than you wanted to in another school.
And then Mechanicsville also feeds into Westminster.
I was gonna say, that messes up our feeder patterns, right? Because now those kids that you're bringing up into Mechanicsville, they're west and Westminster are high, right? Rather than staying down in the southern area.
Mrs. Savigny, uh, our goal one, option one is the closest to what you're describing. Now, that was not one of the three recommended of the seven options. Uh, but that, if you look closely at that goal one, that essentially does that. It moves students into Mechanicsville, moves students into Eldersburg. And then does an additional move, takes care of the Winfield, Mount Airy, um, situation for that split there. So um, you know, that, that moves the fewest number of students. Uh, it does involve Westminster area schools for the feeder pattern. And does not involve any capital projects. But it only reaches the 105%. It does not get down to 100 or, or 95%.
And that's what I was wondering about, um, just doing an addition onto Freedom. Right? Because I mean, we, we've had the, the discussions of, and I'd love to get your feedback from what you've heard from um, the parent groups down in the southern area. But we don't hear parents clamoring about Freedom being overcrowded because it's such a good school. They don't want to be districted out of it.
Correct.
Right? So, um, I mean, if you think about the, I'd, I'd love to survey the, the 1,095 kids that we're talking about, like just that group. Because the, um, the impact to those kids is just like a school closure, right? Like to, to the kids that are redistricted, it's the same exact situation as a, as a school closure. You're being sent to a completely different school, a completely different community. And this is on the, on the eve of trying to recover from the pandemic and the, you know, community's been in complete turmoil for, you know, and the nation, um, in complete turmoil for the last two years. And now on the eve of finally opening up, uh, what we're hoping to be a norm, a relatively normal school year, we're gonna potentially throw the community into another tizzy in terms of, of redistricting.
Going to another school and Susie, the same thing.
So, I mean, and this is all fantastic foundational work. And we will absolutely be using this as talking about, you know, blueprint impacts and, and what we need to deal with for pre-K and potential capital projects. Um, this is all, it, you know, no matter what we decide, this is all very useful information. But just wondering, like, why, what's the thought around maybe just doing an addition onto Freedom? To handle, to at least get them down to 105% uh, utilization for the, the relative short term.
And maybe Linton Springs.
And maybe Linton Springs, right?
Yeah, but I'm glad you posed that question because that's what I was sitting here thinking as well. Um, if we could somehow um, accommodate our students at Freedom by adding on. And again, I'm not sure, um, where we have Freedom on the list as far as um, modernization, um, projects and all. But again, I think that sort of fits right into it as well. And I, again, too, thank the committee for the hard work. Because again, it's just loaded with information and I too would be interested in hearing, um, some of the feedback, um, from, um, the committee members. But again, I, I'm glad that Mrs. Savigny posed that question, um, concerning adding on to Freedom. Is that a possibility for us?
Well, we, uh, the, so, uh, some of the options have additions to Freedom. Uh, we, we have some concerns about the Freedom's our smallest, uh, elementary site. Um, there's, there's, there's concerns with, uh, parking. Um, there's still water management concerns, but those concerns have to be taken and balanced with the fact that the school is dealing with the number of students that's there now. If we put bricks and mortar up just for the, for the, what it's a quad and a double now. Quad and a double, there at six classrooms. The assumption is that it would, uh, that would absorb that, that load. It would increase the, increase the capacity of the school, so the utilization would, would go down. But there were, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, what's the acreage there? Do you know?
Oh, now you're getting me.
Yeah, I was gonna say eight or nine acres, somewhere in that range, just one of, if not the smallest. It and Pony Ridge are the two smallest elementary sites we have.
Yeah.
But is, uh, but the other thing would be, we would, uh, we would also have to look at Sykesville. Sykesville is, is also, uh, gonna be problematic, uh, it's problematic now. So, uh, if we're gonna do additions to, uh, to relieve one school, we'd have to at least consider, uh, the middle school. Middle schools became a big part of this, a big, big part of this discussion. I know it started with Freedom. Uh, but the reality was, a lot of it hinged on the middle school, a lot of the discussions hinged on the middle school. So, uh, we would have to include that in, into that discussion. So that, uh, that cost, um, and, and it is a part of the recommendations that Sykesville would get another, uh, get an addition. But, uh, yeah, the, the, it, it's not an easy addition. It's not an easy site to work on. Can it be done? As I said to the committee numerous times, but they had some of the same concerns. You know, we, there's a, there's an awful lot we can do to, 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 uh, to make improvements to the site perhaps, even given the, you know, the, the constru- the restraints on the size. The, the difficulty is when you, the more you do, the more it's gonna cost. This kind of, you know, so that's one of the difficulties. And with a small site like that, the, the site itself starts to play a real big, uh, factor in the total cost. So it, it's, it's a, it's a complicated question. I can't give a, you know, a complete or a complete straight answer to it. Can it be done? Yeah, we can, we can do a lot of stuff.
There are also transportation issues at Freedom, given the location right on Route 32 there. I'm sure you've seen it at dismissal time or in the morning. It's quite a challenge with buses and cars. So that, we'd have to work around that as well.
And was there an issue with the size of the school? Or that, um, I'm not sure the?
That was at Linton.
There was a Linton, I'm sorry.
Linton, Linton, um, would also probably be addressed with an addition in that scenario. But that would, that would take, um, they would probably have six classes per grade or close to that by adding a, a hundred seats on. And then you're probably getting into, probably needing to add another art room, another music room, uh, another health room, uh, for the additional special content area teachers. So, because with that many classes that you have to see, you just, you, you would need those extra classrooms. So it would probably be a larger addition than just the capacity of evening.
I had a quick question and I always believe in putting something on the table to either see if it's there, stays there, or just take it right off. Um, and that's about splitting, you know, the schools. So part of, uh, Freedom goes to one feeder and part of it goes to another feeder, you know? I grew up in Jersey, that's what we did in our elementary schools. We split where half of us would go to one, you know, junior high school and the other half would go to another junior high school and then feed into other schools. I don't know if we do that here. And if we do, could that alleviate some of the capacity in growth as we're doing some of the other work? So.
You're talking about the, the middle school capacity?
The, the feeders from elementary to middle.
So you're looking at relieving the middle school overcrowding by taking some of the elementary that feed it? So if, if Sykesville Middle's overcrowded because Freedom and, and those other schools are feeding that middle school, you would be taking?
Well, Freedom doesn't feed Sykesville, but yeah.
But that scenario, in, in that case, it would be the other elementaries. For Oklahoma Road, which isn't a school that's over, Freedom feeds. So splitting Freedom wouldn't necessarily be the school we would split. It would be one of the Sykesville feeder schools that we split, probably Linton. And send them north to West Middle to help relieve Sykesville. Is that, is that what you're talking about?
Just other, other math. I mean, I'm not looking, actually, I'm not looking at a specific school. I'm just looking at, has it been discussed about splitting them?
We, we, and, and then, and actually, if you look at goal two, the, the options without the capital additions, we, we do, we move a bunch of Linton and Sykesville Middle kids north to West Middle to relieve it. And then in some cases, we split them when we, to try and reduce the amount of kids we move. So, yeah, we, we looked at very many iterations.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think in an ideal world, we would want our feeder patterns to be completely clean. Right, but we're, we're, we've got, we're fairly short of a, of an ideal world. Um, but I can actually speak from experience with, you know, where my kids are in the Sandy Mount to, to Shiloh. But then, you know, all the, all the rest of those kids go to Man Valley while the Sandy Mount kids come back out and go to Westminster High School. So we've got that, that sort of broken feeder pattern. But it, it's, it works out okay, you know, when the kids know what to expect and.
The one, the one instance where we really tried, I mean, there, there has to be some split feeders. But we did actively, even where we split, tried to avoid where you have 5% or 10%. Because then you're taking like five kids, 10 kids out of 80 fifth graders. Those five are gonna go to a totally different school and the other 75 or 80 are going to, you know. Which, which we do try to avoid that where we can, but, but yeah, the, the splits of 30, 40, 50%. That, that's what, you know, we have to live with and, and these options. Uh, like Mike said, Eldersburg and all the options has to be split, but the splits are close to 50, 50, 40, 60.
Right, except for, you know, and, and this is something like if we're gonna do redistricting, we might want to fix some of those remaining problems, right? Like there's a 7% of, of Willie that goes to West.
So we do, the, the options here fix the one that's small, which is the Winfield to Sykesville Middle, which is a small 10, 10%, less than 15%. Most, most of these options try to fix that. We didn't try to fix those northern ones because it was out of the charge of this committee, but.
But I mean, if we're, if we end up impacting West in some way, um, you know, through all this, let's say we pick option three, which does end up going into Westminster, right? We might want to try to address that at the same time.
In, in the impacts of the three recommended, we're just sending kids. We're not, we're sending.
Moving, okay. So they're just receiving kids.
They're, they're receiving schools, um, so.
Okay, so I guess the, the original question of whether you could build on to just an addition on to Freedom, because that's the most immediate problem and the, the largest problem, um, to get to the 105% capacity or whatever. Um, you're saying that it could be done, but it would be tough because of the, the size of the site.
Well, it would, I mean, I'm glad you returned it. I was hoping we, we would. And so just in general, that's a different process altogether, which you know. And, and admittedly, we started it by, by blending capital additions into a redistricting plan. And so when they, when they came to me at a certain point and said, hey, are, the, the committee has some interest in, some interest in this discussion of capital additions as part of it, still redistricting? Is that okay? I was like, I, you know, I don't know. I went to Dr. Lockard and said, what do you think? And he said, I think we should have an update meeting with the Board of Edges to see. So this became a bit of a hybrid. But if, if the conversation locally became, well, let's just see about an addition or two. If, you know, if you went for Sykesville and then as you know, that goes, a- and no redistricting. Then that goes back to your educational facilities master plan and then your capital improvement request in October. And we're kind of between those, you know, we're in the middle of your, your EFMP's been approved and now your, your CIP is not far on your horizon. But to answer that question ultimately, Mrs. Savigny, it's, it's that, it's that feasibility study. You know, if you had a project, you'd start with a scope, a feasibility study and it would, and, and the architects would be able to, and engineers would be able to say, yes, you could build this on that site. And maybe one of the things Ray was saying is, but because it's the site, it will cost you a little bit more because you're gonna have to do this, that, and the, and the other. So now we're talking about, you know, that would extinguish this process and it would become that process kind of thing. And I, I, when I said I'm glad it came back, because I wanted to ask Ray and Bill, what happens if you're in between your master plan and your CIP and that becomes a local priority? In terms of the state process, can you say, this isn't in our master plan, but it's now in our CIP? Yeah, we've done that before. You can amend the master plan and, and add it. Add it to CIP and then amend. I think we've both done it both ways.
The deadline for the state to get their, uh, the final CIP from the board is actually around Thanksgiving. So there is time to even revise. So there is time to even revise the CIP. If it was in October, you could go back in November and revise it and resubmit what you send to the state.
So couldn't we even propose it as we were looking, I mean, you know, we need to build an addition? Plus, we want to plan ahead for blueprint pre-K? I mean, that's the only way I can think.
My concern was, I wanted to see what they said, was that we wouldn't have to say, well, we'd have to wait until next May when we bring the, the master plan back for discussion. And I think they're saying, no, you don't need to do that, so.
What about, while you're on, let's, let's say she's got a great idea and we add on to two elementary schools. We're still in a hole with the middle schools. So we have to fix that. And again, I, I don't want to see us do something shortsighted that then we're moving kids two years after we get done the additions. The middle schools are almost more worrisome. In theory, the elementary schools collectively have capacity, the middle schools don't.
Correct. The, the middle schools together in twenty twenty-six are ninety kids over their capacity, so, right. So that's part of the reason in option, primary option one, with the, the one without the capital additions, we had to move those ninety middle school students north to West Middle. And then some, I forget the number, the associated elementary kids in those same areas that also had to move north into Mechanicsville, which then also impacted Robert Moton because we moved more, more into Mechanicsville than it could handle. And then we had to move some from that there into Robert Moton. But yeah, the, the middle schools actually drove, without the capital additions, the middle school overcrowding drove a lot of the redistricting and the options because we had to get the, move those students. And to keep clean feeds, you know, we knew we were going to also move the elementary. So we started with the middle, you know, when we could do capital additions and build on to the middle school, then, you know, Sykesville or, or Mount area or a combination thereof, then we didn't have to worry about moving those kids. And then we, we could focus more on the elementary moves. But, but yeah, the middle, middle schools would still, and, and just so you know, the, in the facility, last, the current facility master plan and, you know, currently with the county, although I don't believe they've submitted any development, Sykesville Middle is inadequate by the concurrency management and adequate public facilities ordinance. So if a development came to me for certification, adequate threshold certification, it would be inadequate in the, in the Sykesville Middle area, so.
Bill, on that subject, for the, the utilization for Sykesville Middle, can you, so I'm looking at the student enrollment projections in the current EFMP.
Okay.
But I'm looking at Sykesville, and so it's at a hundred and eight this year for, for, or in twenty twenty-one, the actual enrollment. And then it actually declines for several years. And then there's this huge pop-up in year twenty twenty-six. Can you help me understand what, what's driving that pop? Like, so if there's this steady decline and then all of a sudden it pops right up?
It's always associated with the grade level enrollments. So, you know, current third graders are going to go to fourth and then fifth and then go to sixth in the middle. So what'll happen is, they never come in neat pockets of a hundred or seventy-five. One year you'll have fifty-five and the next year you'll have a hundred and ten. So what, you know, when the hundred and ten goes through the middle school and then say fifty-five or sixty follows, the hundred and ten artificially bumped up the middle school and then when they moved on to ninth grade, you know, you saw a drop. Well, it wasn't like that they lost, it's just the nature of the way the grades move through, the, the students move through the grades. So in, in that case, it's, it's really just based on the elementaries that are feeding Sykesville Middle and the students they have in those grades. You'll see, you'll see, if you go look at their feeder elementaries.
We've got a huge class of first graders in one of the feeder schools to Sykesville Middle is basically what's going on.
It was a baby year. It was a big baby boom.
Right.
Yeah, and, and you, I can probably see that through, I mean, I've looked at these projections so often over the years.
The capital money and, and option two, Sykesville Middle's the biggest, it's, it's almost half the money.
It's the larger, you know, we would add four classrooms, so it'd be the largest of the additions. And then also to keep in mind, I know because it's somewhat, sometimes folks don't understand, you know, in the, in the public especially, the concurrency management and the certifications I do for the county about whether a, a, a school district is over a hundred and twenty percent or not, it's the six-year capital window. So I have to look at six years of, of the projections that line up with the current adopted capital plan that the county just adopted. So if it's over a hundred and twenty percent in any of those six years, then it's deemed inadequate. And, and then the planning commission can't approve a plan. So it's not just one year that I'm looking at, it's the six-year window. And that's, that's the way the ordinance is written.
Yep.
Obviously, it's, you know, could be.
Could be changed, but.
For, for future, could be. It's, it's, and the concurrency management ordinance, I started with the county planning office when, right after or during, when the last rewrite happened and it had been rewritten probably three times in the eight or so years prior to me starting there. So it, it can be rewritten, it has been, so.
Were any of the Winfield students formerly at a Westminster school like Friendship Valley or, or Robert Moton? I see in this one option, again, forty current Winfield students would be redistricted to Moton. But wasn't there a time when?
I was gonna say that, that's before MIT.
Well, I'm thinking of even when like Friendship opened.
Probably before PARs, I mean, the, before PARs opened, Mount area's district was different and Winfield's just, just, you know, they, those, I wasn't around, not like, I just started when right before PARs opened, so it's, it's possible. But I, it's, it's twenty, it's eighteen, nineteen, twenty years ago since that would have been the case, at least.
Yeah, I'm not saying it would be affecting the same students and families certainly. But I was just trying to remember in history whether there was a time when some of those students were redistricted from the Westminster schools to Winfield. You don't have to look for an answer, I see you jotting it down.
I'm curious now, I might look for myself.
So I think if Elmer Wolf opening new, when Union Ten Elementary put like back.
Yeah, there was, yeah, it was some period of time, it seems like.
You got more?
I do.
You got more?
Yeah.
Bring it on.
So I, I just taken a step back and the, in trying to decide which of the three options we would favor, depending on how it would move forward. And the, the, the two reasons that you would move forward with the redistricting are either you're going to improve academics or you're going to save money, right? But, and so redistricting to, to save money, you would be doing it so that we wouldn't have to build additions, right? Because we have excess capacity in other areas of the county, so you're kind of shifting everything. But that ends up moving more kids, right? And so then, which is a competing goal that we have of move, move as few kids as possible. So I'm, I'm struggling with where I would land on a favorable option because I feel like the, the reason you do districting, redistricting is to save money, which is counter to building capital additions, so.
And the idea behind additions also, you know, one, remember, there are operating costs to transport students. So building the additions limited the amount of moves, which kept us more certain that there wouldn't be additional bus routes. Without those additions, those moves become much greater and the potential is there. I, I think we would do, obviously, primary option one, we said we wouldn't had, have to add bus routes. But, but it does make it more challenging to transport those kids. So it's, you know, if there's any increase in operating costs like transportation or staffing, you know, they, they potentially could cost more, over twenty years, they'll cost more than the additions would cost. Because the additions are bonded and paid in fifteen years and it's, you know, year by year, a million dollars is a hundred thousand dollar debt service payment. In fifteen years, that goes away. And, and that's a one-time kind of deal. Whereas the operating, if you have to add a bus route or two or add, you know, the staffing changes, you have to add an art teacher because now you've put more kids in a, say, Linton or something and put them over the seven hundred and fifty. There are other complicating factors. So it's not just, oh, we're trying to avoid the capital cost, we're also weighing the operating impacts. And, and that's why the addition options were brought into, you know, the capital was brought into to try and limit the impact of those other things.
Goal four, option one, we got us to the ninety-five percent without additions, but we went well into the Westminster area and would have a severe impact on our bus routing. I couldn't make a judgment. My guess is what we would have to add buses. If we did a comprehensive redistricting across the whole county, that would be my preliminary guess, that we would have to add some buses.
And it's about a hundred and eighty thousand per bus route plus additional bus drivers, right?
Well, not quite that, that much, but closer to a hundred thousand, eighty, eighty to a hundred thousand.
Per route?
But it keeps going up.
If you would prefer to do, to look at the idea of just doing additions and adjusting our CIP, we could, we could change this process and just look at that instead of looking at a redistricting project. That's always an option.
And, or if you want to continue to explore that, we've been sitting here trying to figure out, how do you do that? And, and we're wondering maybe a discussion item on your September business agenda to make sure we understand what this process would be to amend your EFMP and to, you know, adjust where we would go with the, the CIP. We're not, so you threw that at us on a, you know, that's something you, that was one of your ideas that we have to think about. I don't know how, how viable that is to, we don't know how viable that is to you and how to now approach that because those are two distinct processes. So this one's still moving, but then there would be that one too to consider.
I think there's too many moving parts right here now and I think we need to talk about it more.
And what worries me, the middle schools, we gotta do something.
We, we haven't even discussed that part. We're looking at the elementary, it's going on seven o'clock. And now we've done a new idea that really could change the whole redistricting plan and move forward with something else totally different. And I, I don't think, I don't know about the rest of you, but I don't know how, I can't vote on any of those three because there's stuff I don't like about any of them, you know? Just because, and no offense to you ladies and, and people that have been, men and women, because I, look, this is, this, this is a hard thing to do. But I, I'm telling you, I can't sit here tonight and say, okay, I am going to vote on one because I, I really like the option of a, a couple additions because, as I said, people move to that area and they don't want to look in their backyard and say, honey, that's a school you were supposed to go to, but now you're going to be on a bus for a F hour. And also, you're going to be going to school, it's another hour early. So I, I just think there's a lot to consider in this, that we have, that we've brought up tonight that people didn't, you know?
And I think that we have to have those conversations with the commissioners, right? Like, so anything that we're talking about, like, so two of these three options include-
Money.
Capital additions. And this potential fourth option that we're putting on the table would also involve money. So we need to have commitment from the commissioners that this is a route that we can all hold hands and, and go down that path. But I, but I also think, and as we discuss more, like, I, I really think that this has to be looked at holistically in connection with the blueprint, which might, and, and the issue with the middle schools, right? So that might lead us down the path of option three, right? But it's not something that I think that we would need to have to vote on by November to say, this is definitely the direction that we're going in. It would say, well, our vote could be, we need to do more analysis and include the, the blueprint pre-K in all of this, right? Because that, those, the, the pre-K stuff is going to impact all the elementary schools around the entire county. And we kind of look at that holistically and understand what our capital needs are across the board.
I'm skeptical, can you do an addition at Freedom that's big enough to solve the problem? Or do you need to do the smaller addition that's part of option three or two and still move kids? It's, it's going to be tough. And, and I, I don't know what, what's the best thing? Like, like for instance, me personally, and I, I, you guys will phone me down probably, I'd be ready to say, okay, let's say for option three, we're gonna consider it, we're gonna do meetings, we're gonna do stuff. But we have a whole lot of questions on, on what we really need to coordinate. Or option two, I don't care, pick one. But can we pick an option and say, you know, but we have all these other questions? Or is that a waste of time? Should we say, let's come up with a bunch of questions and do another work session in a month and?
I think we should do another work session, to be honest with you, because there's too many dangling parts here. And now that we've got another whole idea of an addition, you know, we're talking about addition additions that, that need to be discussed. And I just don't think that, I don't want to vote on anything tonight because we're, you know, we're, we're, there, I know I'm thinking of questions right now that I could sit down and talk another half hour, forty-five minutes on just what I'm thinking right now, what ifs, so, and prices and how this is going to affect. So I, I think we need to sit down here right now and make it another, unfortunately, another meeting just to do this.
Now, my question is, and this is, could be rhetorical, is that option four intended to delay it long enough that we can look at the blueprint? Or is that an option that we're hoping will alleviate this whole redistricting issue for a longer period of time? Or is it just a holdoff strictly waiting for the blueprint? And this is, is something we can consider long-term, but I wasn't sure if there was an immediate intention with that fourth option.
And, and I'd ask John, you're the blueprint guy, right? We can hope we have answers on that and coordinate it with this, but what's the odds? We're really going to have answers on that in time? We just aren't getting answers quickly.
I think that the first time that all of us, not just here, but the whole state are going to get clearer direction, let's say, from the state is going to be a little bit this month when MSD is required under the change they made to the blueprint timeline to produce the guidelines for the comprehensive implementation plan. We'll get some insights into what they're thinking. But the AIB under the new, under the change to the timeline has to produce the model state comprehensive implementation plan by December fifteenth, I believe, of this calendar year. That'll be the first big window where, where it's open and we see, okay, here's what they're really thinking. Because we're each, twenty-four local boards are going to have to then produce your local implementation plan, build around that model plan. And that's where we'll, you know, we'll start to see some real guidelines, like here's what they're thinking in these policy areas. But all of those questions I doubt will be answered, like what if a fifty percent?
And you're saying that's, that's three and a half months from now.
Yeah, and then the question on would there be funding? And the, I do think that there'll be some pockets of state funding relative to the blueprint. But will that be millions of dollars that would solve all of our needs? I doubt that, there, there'll probably be something less than that. And then the question of, of the analysis, I'll come back to this one last time. You, you would really need a feasibility study to, to know that about the Freedom site. And you would typically approve that in a project that's in your, you know, that grows out of your master, facilities master plan into your CIP. However, we have commissioned feasibility studies in my time here out of sequence. And it was for East Middle?
No.
Career and Tech, what was it for?
Was it for East?
I thought we got special permission for East at a, at a board meeting to, out of the capital cycle to spend fund balance.
So you, you're not, you're able to do that? So if you were to say, I mean, we could bring that as an action item and that's going to be tens of thousands, not hundreds, I think, still. And you could answer that question, what could you do at the Freedom site reasonably? And remember, you need that, even though the state, whether or not the state's going to participate in a construction project, you still have to follow that process. So that feasibility study wouldn't really be wasted in that sense. But it, that, that's, to me, is going to be a crucial piece of information that you would need to have to make that decision.
We did that, one of, on one of the last two products, projects, you said the same thing and we said, then we might as well cut it loose.
Right, so that might be something you want to think about as your own action item on an agenda soon. If you really, if that's a level of analysis.
How hard is it for us, meaning you, to decide, is it even feasible to do an addition that big on that site? Or is that why we need the feasibility study? So we need to do that.
That's what it would tell us, yeah, yeah. It, it might, you know, yes, we, we can try to move very quickly. We, we don't know what the, you know, right now, we do know that the consultant, consultant's costs and their- and their availability is very, is very limited. So that can affect the price. So the consultants are like everything else. It's, they're short in supply and their, their lead times are great. But we, we would have to go down that path. We could get lucky and find somebody quickly. If we were to get moving very quickly, yeah, yeah. Do that.
Most likely would take a, you know, for that site specifically, especially, you know, with the change in the county site plan process. One of the big questions would be, less, less will the addition itself fit? Because we have six classrooms there, modular classrooms, portable classrooms. But the, when we develop a site, we have to do stormwater management and, and those things take up part of that acreage.
Yep.
And that site is so old, I, I think very likely we'd have to do the whole site, bring it up to standard potentially. And like, that would take more analysis at the feasibility study level than we've historically done.
It would be immensely expensive. We, we do have, unfortunately, the topography is such, our neighbors, we've had to do some remediation to prevent stormwater migrating. I know we're getting into the details and we don't need to do this. Just to let you know, though, that stormwater management is going to, it can, can change the prices dramatically.
I mean, the good thing is you have Linda Eisenberg and Laura Metz on your committee that can also give guidance on that. I mean, that's what they do. So that's always a good thing. I think, you know, like you said, coming back, you're coming to the commissioners is, is a great idea. After your next work session, having, you know, a brief back to the commissioners on where we stand or where, excuse me, you stand and understand for us to understand. And then move forward to the public, you know, whenever it is, September, whatever, or November, you know? But yeah, we can, I think, I personally, I think it's a great, the closer we are in understanding, you know, between the boards, you know, the better off we're going to be. Always say that, so.
What we could do is, we have the September 14th board meeting coming up. We could schedule another work session, maybe the week before the September 14th board meeting. And look at, you know, further this discussion so that we could determine what action items we wanted to consider for the September 14th.
Next week?
Next week.
Oh, my gosh.
That is it. Tomorrow's September.
So we're looking at September 7th, does that work for people?
I mean, unless you wanted to do it the same day as, as the board meeting just earlier in the day.
That's way too much.
Yeah.
For everyone, I really think so.
Well, really any day prior to the 21st, I suppose.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying to think, just from a perspective of looking at the options. So it sounds like we're going to talk more about the three options kind of side by side. But options two and three that both consider an addition onto Freedom. Right? So there's at least a small addition onto Freedom, right? So it's just a, we're just talking about potentially the size of the addition, right? So is it a four classroom addition? Is it a 10 classroom addition, right?
Right.
To address, are you talking about the addition to address the overcrowding?
Yeah.
To get it to 105%? It's 141 students over capacity and that puts out 127%. So at a minimum, it would probably be six classrooms to get it down to.
And maybe some art or what, maybe a couple other.
Yeah, that, we would have, we would have to, I'd have to work with the instructional side to look at, you know, the staffing projections for that number and how many, you know, classes of art would be needed. And, and if they needed another art room or a music room, that would be part of the planning.
And, um, let's say we could do that. Let's say we added six classrooms and a music and an art and everything was wonderful and the stormwater management didn't cost much. Will the state recognize the new capacity? Are we, we're comfortable with that?
The, the state would recognize the capacity. Would they participate? I don't think so, because.
But we still wouldn't, they wouldn't say we're overcrowded.
The, the state rate of capacity is just a calculation of how big your building is, how many classrooms. Like if, if, like Manchester Valley, the state didn't participate in, but there's a state rate of capacity because it exists and the calculation's done. So building the addition, the new capacity would be recognized.
Okay.
Right. Correct.
So we still need to look at a date.
If you'd like to have another work session before the September 21st, yeah.
I'm fine after, after three o'clock on the 7th, I'm, I'm good.
Dom, you want to check, see where you are?
I gotta go grab my work, fine.
The 7th is fine with me.
Emily, see what you started with that question?
Yeah, if it were in the evening, I could do the 7th.
Which day, the 7th?
The 7th, yeah.
Yeah, good for me.
What time would work for you, Donna? Is five o'clock too early?
Um, no, I could probably do five.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so September 7th, work session at five o'clock.
And our starting point would just be to continue questions and dialogue. And if we can update any part of how the process, process would work on the capital option.
Yeah, I think if, if you guys, based on our questions, see more information that would help us, we'll take it. But, uh, yeah, it's, it's tough. And, and, and it may well, I don't know whether the committee will be happy or mad about that. It may shake back out to one of these threes, our answer. Yeah.
It could, but I, we need to talk about this more because it's, there's too many questions.
Yeah.
Uncertainties.
Yeah.
And you can't do that. I mean, we've got to do it already.
Right. Well, thank you, board members and staff for, for the time spent together discussing it. I think, you know, even though we haven't come up with a, you know, a proposal at this point to start vetting, at least we've started the conversation and we know what our next steps are. And we know what we can start working on for information to provide for next time, so. So we'll leave it there today and pick it up on the 7th.
Thank you.
Would we be interested with?
I, I want to thank you guys for being here tonight. I don't know if any of you are available on the 7th.
Well.
We just, one, just point, could we invite any of the members to come walk Freedom site for the next meeting and meet with maybe Steve and Jessica Smith, the principals? We can truly have a fresh perspective on Freedom site as we discuss it. I know it's been a while since I've visited it. But maybe the classroom, the site, so that way it's with fresh eyes, the commissioners, whoever would like to come? Is that something we could possibly do?
I think it's a fantastic idea. We were actually thinking about asking about that tonight and we ran out of time. So is that something that we can do? I mean, does it make sense to try to coordinate that, like, right before? The work session, is that even doable?
Happy first day of school, we're going on a tour.
We, yeah, we, we can get something together to tour the facility.
Is that worth doing, like, right before the next work session?
So on the 7th. So on the 7th, earlier, like, since the work session is at five, maybe walk through at three?
What time is dismissal? Yeah.
When is dismissal done?
You won't be able to park.
When's dismissal, Keith? Three.
Well, does it make sense to, to do the walkthrough at five and then come here and continue with the?
Or even, if you can do it earlier, or four. We don't want to, there's enough going on that day that we don't, we don't want to disrupt dismissal.
Right, right, right.
Is that, is that a bridge too far to try to do that?
Yeah, that's the first day of school.
It's the second day of school.
Second, sorry. Yeah, that's the, it's, it's.
We'll, we'll still be pretty busy.
Are you sure? Because I know transportation will be very busy that day.
There's always one.
You want to try?
I can't actually do three, but I, I could do a walkthrough at five and then like, keep going after that, if that works for folks. I don't know, but what do you guys think?
So you want to do a walkthrough at five and then come here, like it, you can't do it at six because of the time factor of driving and stuff. So you wouldn't be able to have a work session.
Could you have a work session at the school? Is there any reason that could?
Can't videotape that?
Yeah, no.
Can we do four and six?
Let's say, do that again?
Say, could we do four walkthrough and six meeting?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I could probably do, I could do a four. Is that giving the school enough time to, to clear out?
Yeah.
He says by four, they should be clear.
Okay, so September 7th, four o'clock walkthrough at the school and then six o'clock work session here. Okay? All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that suggestion.